... system throughout the year. Thanks to community feedback, we have kept the layout of the building the same as you can see, but provided much needed enhancements to it.
All right, good evening. I'd like to call the November 13, 2025 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, be presiding over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Scully for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for another beautiful day. Thank you for every person in this room. Thank you for the opportunity you've given us to serve your people in this community, really give us the wisdom to do that, to the best of our ability to serve those people, to fill their needs. Thank you for the past two years, serving with this council. As we prepare for a new council, I give God thanks for this group of people and the good work that we've been able to do. Thank you, God, especially for Marion and Monica. Thank you, God, for Tanya, Les, Portia, PJ. And I thank you, God, for Seth and Arjane, as they prepare for service. God bless our time together, so that we may make decisions that please you, that serve our community well, that lift the people up, fill their needs. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right, Mayor Connolly, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Mr. Manager, any recommended changes?
I have no changes, Mayor.
All right, double motion.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Move on to special recognitions.
I'd like to ask Kelly Wall to come forward. Tonight is our honor to recognize Kelly Wall for his retirement from the city of Greenville with the Public Works Department. And I'd like to take just a second to kind of give you a description of this man that stands beside me. Kelly Wall began his career with the Greenville, city of Greenville, in 2005 as a crew leader in the Public Works Building and Grounds Division. Kelly graduated from Lenore Community College with an associate's degree in landscape horticulture, and also received his North Carolina landscaping contractor's license. Kelly was promoted to landscaping supervisor in 2018, and was responsible for maintaining the city's four cemeteries. He also participated in storm response activities and citywide beautification. In fact, Kelly has played a vital role in organizations such as Relief, where he designed and planted hundreds of trees throughout our community. He has been a valuable team member on multiple community tree day projects, Arbor Day events, and other celebrations. Even more important than Kelly's leadership and work ethic is his bright smile and cheerful attitude that has left an immeasurable impact on the city and his coworkers. Now, many times, we say when someone retires, that you have left a permanent mark on the city, and most of the times, it's just a symbolic meaning. But you can rest assured that the work that you've done for the environment and the trees within our community will live on forever, and you have made that impact for everybody to be able to benefit from, for generations to come. You have a lot to be thankful for, and we have a lot to be thankful for as a city for your service to this entire community. Great job.
Appreciate it. (applause) I'm not putting my hands on planting a tree or cutting a tree down, if you've done one or the other. So, congratulations. First to the last.
All right, I've been waiting all day for this one. Come on up, Liverman. So, we are also thankful to be able to recognize Sergeant Curtis Liverman for his service to the city of Greenville through the Greenville Police Department. And I'd like to again start off by just giving you an indication of who this fellow is standing beside me. Curtis Liverman began his law enforcement career in 1997. Man, you're old. Let me tell you, I was just barely out of high school then.
Michael.
Oh, my gosh.
He served with the Edington Police Department, and then the Chauvin County Sheriff's Department, before joining the Greenville Police Department in 2003. During his time with GPD, Sergeant Liverman has served in various roles, including in patrol, the gang unit, impact, and property crimes. His final position was supervisor of the Major Crimes Unit and Forensics Unit. One of his most notable accomplishments is leading the Major Crimes Unit to a, get this, 100% homicide clearing rate over the past year. That's awesome. Sergeant Liverman retired effective November 1st, with 28 years of distinguished law enforcement service, of which 22 years and seven months were spent serving with the city of Greenville. And in all, I really could roast you for a while now, but I will not do that. All I can say is, you're a top-notch fellow. You have dedicated your life to this community, in service to the citizens of Greenville, and we are forever grateful for all that you have done. I'm going to miss seeing your face at all these meetings, because I knew we were in it together. Now, I'd like all the members of the Greenville ENC Alliance to come forward. I will not be roasting y'all, okay? Is this not mine? That's mine, all right. It goes in my office, huh? So, back in 2019, the city of Greenville and GUC came together with the private sector to create an economic development initiative for our community. And this was a new territory for our city and our community, to be able to look at driving economic growth, not only within Pitt County and Greenville, but all of eastern North Carolina. And many times, when you're going down this road of economic development, it can take sometimes 10 or more years to be able to realize the fruits of the labor involved in all that, because there's so many relationships and so many variables that go into promoting economic development within a region. But I am proud to say that this group of individuals right here, through the Greenville ENC Alliance, have really knocked it out of the park over the last six years. In fact, over the last year and a half, we've been able to make two major announcements with concerns to Boviet Solar and NiPro, that's going to add over 2,000 jobs to our community, in addition to at the same time promoting job growth through education, as well as building a shell building for expanded economic development. And what's most important is that they've been able to do it by fostering those relationships with all of our stakeholders within the community, including ECU, GUC, Pitt Community College, the county, the city, all of us working together with the Department of Commerce, NCEDP, to be able to put the city of Greenville, Pitt County, and eastern North Carolina on the map. And it has been noticed. It has not only been noticed within this city, within this county, but it's also been noticed nationwide and regionally. In fact, I got the information right here, because the International Economic Development Council has recently awarded three separate awards to the Greenville ENC Alliance. The first is the Multimedia Promotion Gold Award for video and digital storytelling campaign. The second was the Talent Development and Retention Gold Award for the 2024 Better Skills, Better Jobs Career Fair, and we know how successful that has been for our community. And the most prestigious award that we are just so happy for is being named the Economic Development Organization of the Year for the 2004 populations between 25,000 and 200,000. The judges ranked the organization for its overall community impact and success over an 18-month period through its services, programs, and initiatives, partnerships, and collaborations, marketing and promotions, and financial performance. In addition to these impressive awards for the great work that the Greenville ENC Alliance is doing, earlier this year, the Alliance was also recognized as one of 88 economic development organizations accredited by the International Economic Development Council. And the mayor and I had a part, and that's probably why you got that, is because of that awesome job that we did. And then, the accreditation program is a comprehensive peer review process that measures economic development organizations against community-held standards in the profession. Earning the status as an accredited economic development organization tells the community and prospects that the Greenville ENC Alliance has attained a measure of excellence. And I can't stress enough how proud we are of the work that you guys have done, of putting the city of Greenville and Pitt County on the map, and being a force to deal with in the future economic growth of our whole entire region. Great job.
Congratulations, everybody.
Somebody get Michael an award, please. You already got one.
All right, the one good thing about being the mayor is that you get to run the meeting, you can make decisions on when you can have things during the meeting, and this is one of those moments. Mr. Cowan, would you like to come up here? So... So, back in 2015, both Michael and myself came in about the exact same time, and if anybody is really good with math, 2015, oh yeah, it's been 10 years. So, we came in about the same time. Michael was the Assistant City Manager at the time, and I was able to meet him for the first time, and I knew we were going to be a hit, right? I knew we were going to be a hit. We were both finance guys, we liked to dig into the numbers, and as Michael has said, is that I've really tamed down since that first term. And I think part of the reason that I have tamed down is because of him, because he has done an outstanding job for the city of Greenville. Over my tenure as the mayor, he has done a great job leading our city, as Assistant City Manager at first, and being able to help out with constructing and making our city, and creating a great atmosphere for our city employees. And so, a couple of years ago, when Ann Wall made the decision that she was going to retire, it was an easy decision for the council to make sure that we would elevate Michael to be the city manager, and he has done an outstanding job. I cannot say enough good things about Michael. He puts his heart and soul into everything that he does. Every time that I go to an event, I look around and I know Michael's there. Sometimes I think it's because he's looking for free stuff or free food.[982.25][982.25](laughter) But truly, he honestly cares, and he loves our city, and he goes everywhere. If you can ask any of the council members up here, he's everywhere. He wants to be a part of it, he understands, he's bought into what it takes to be a city manager, and we are incredibly proud of you. We are thankful for your service to the city. We have a nice plaque that we want to commemorate, 10 years of service for the city. And I don't think I will be here, but somebody someday is going to present you with 30 years of service to the city, right? Right? But on behalf of the city of Greenville, we are incredibly thankful for your leadership. You've done an outstanding job. We're looking forward to 10 more years with the city, continuing to help guide our city moving forward. So, thank you. All right, now we will move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at the same meeting or another meeting during the same week, shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated, with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals registered with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allot of 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons of a registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allot of 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Yes, sir. Ms. Ann Maxwell, if you would like to approach the public podium.
I'm here tonight to thank this council, because I am appreciative of everything that you've done for the last two years, and I want to thank you for listening to citizens like me when we came up, and I have always felt, when I addressed this council, that you respected whatever I had to say, and thank you for that. I also want to thank our city manager, I know he just got thanked, but Ann, this council, for the trash can recycling container project that you've started in the city to help make our city look better. And I had, when it started in our neighborhood, back this fall, when the enforcement really started, I had a citizen contact me and say, "It's the first time in 17 years that my street is not full of trash cans." So, I'm very appreciative of that. And I'm also, when I start thinking about all the things that I care about that you all have done, you have been very progressive about caring about sidewalks and ADA improvements, and you've also really supported city staff. And that is another thing that's so important, because when I think about my tax dollars and think about all of the wonderful things that city employees do, and their expertise, when we had another event in our neighborhood about a year ago, when a guy on a bicycle shot an employee, an ECU employee, and our police department, they were wonderful. They handled it without, they were able to shut down the school, no children were hurt, and they were able to apprehend the guy without shooting him, and I just applaud the police department. And in addition to that happening in our neighborhood, on a weekly basis, I am so appreciative of the work of Public Works. And, you know, my husband and I garden, so we pile stuff up almost every weekend that they have to come and get on Monday, in addition to our trash, and I appreciate that. But the reason that I wanted to say something about them now, because they go above and beyond. ECU was doing a parade on Saturday. So, because we hadn't planned well, we had all this stuff out in front of our house, they came and got it. And Saturday morning, when the parade was going by, it was all nice and clean. So, thank you to Public Works.
And that's tied?
The time's on.
Keep on going, you get going.
Keep the compliments coming.[1321.48][1321.48](laughter)
Thank you. I have a lot I want to say. And so, another thing, is in our neighborhood, our fire department has to go above and beyond, because they have to come and teach students that they don't need to have fires. They just had to do it last night, because they come, they don't realize they got to have something to cover it, and so, you know, they could burn down our neighborhood if we didn't have a very responsive fire department, that if you called them, they come and teach the students what they have to do. And recently, I have been, because I was helping with the dedication of the Inez-Fredley Riverside Park, I worked with Don Octagon and Dennis Vestal, and they could not be finer human beings. They work hard, they are respectful, and on the day of the event, of course, you would know, we'd have three fire anthills. So, immediately, they're calling somebody there to take care of the fire anthills. And what I recognize about them is that you all have just taken on the responsibility of all of those athletic fields north of the river, and that's going to be more work on them. So, you have to have taxes, and thank you all for being wise about that. I really appreciate it. And I'm going to miss two of you being up here, but I really respect all of the work that you've done. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Our next speaker?
We do not have any additional speakers.
All right, anybody else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Maury York, and I wanted to give a thank you also to Ms. Gooby and Mr. Wall for being so open to the ideas that were expressed by the public during the process for the development of the UDO that you'll be considering later tonight. They solicited the public's feedback, they acted accordingly, and I think that document incorporates many of the ideas that the public expressed, and also that the committee expressed. And I know it wasn't always the easiest process, but we appreciate the outcome.
Thank you, Ms. York.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak during the public comment period? Please come forward, state your name for the record, you have three minutes. All right, seen, we'll close the public comment period, we'll move on to board appointments. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. First board is the Board of Adjustment. Mayor Pro Tem Daniels.
I'd like to appoint Sebastian Cressley.
Second. All right, motion been made by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels, second by Councilmember Scully. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Cressley.
Okay, next, the Environmental Advisory Commission. Councilmember Blackburn.
I'd like to appoint Marion Swinker.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
It is Dr. Swinker.
Dr. Swinker. Congratulations, Dr. Swinker.
Dr. Swinker.
Next, we have the Historic Preservation Commission. There's two appointments. Councilmember Blackburn.
For one of those appointments, I'd like to appoint Kamari Carter-Green.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations.
Mr. Carter-Green.
Mr. Carter-Green, thank you.
Next, we have the Housing Authority. We are waiting on the resident commissioner nomination, but we do have a couple of other appointments. Councilmember Foreman.
I would like to appoint Marlo Bynum.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Foreman, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Bynum.
All right, and we also have one seat. Mayor Pro Tem Daniels.
I'd like to appoint Kenneth Wilkins.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Wilkins.
Okay, next, we have the Planning and Zoning Commission. Councilmember Scully.
I made that one last.
Oh, and you told me that Monday, sorry about that. Councilmember Robinson.
I would nominate Grace Bell.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Bell.
Next, we've got the Police Community Relations Committee. These are direct appointments. Councilmember Robinson.
Hold that up, in place.
Okay, yes, sir. And then, we've got Councilmember Willis.
Yes, if we could continue it, please.
All right, sounds good. Next, we have the Recreation and Parks Commission. Councilmember Willis.
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Mr. Montez Bishop.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Scully. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Bishop.
All right, and that concludes the appointments. Mayor Connolly.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to new business, new public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Mr. Manager, our first public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. I have number five. Warrants requested by 515 Cotent Street Entertainment LLC DBA Agave to amend City Code Title VI, Chapter II, Article E, Uptown Outdoor Dining Permit with the following changes. Rename Uptown Outdoor Dining Permit to Downtown Outdoor Dining Permit. Reduce the required width for the unobstructed path for pedestrians from a minimum of 5 feet 6 inches to 4 feet 48 inches along city-maintained streets. To extend the time for tables, chairs, and improvements to be removed and/or secured from 1:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., and to add additional uses that may utilize outdoor dining along city-mandated maintained streets to include the following uses, Bar 2022, Mike... maintained streets to include the following uses: Bar 2022, microbrewery, micro-distillery, and/or wine and beer store. I now call forward our Chief Planner, Shante Gooby, for the presentation.
Can you read that one more time?
I'm gonna make it a lot simpler than him. So again, this is for outdoor dining, is only for the downtown area. Back in 2013, outdoor dining for the downtown area was first established, and it was for, obviously, city-maintained sidewalks. Earlier this year, you may remember, there was a text amendment to allow outdoor dining along the section of Dickinson Avenue that was in the outdoor dining area. At that, after that text amendment, we had an agreement with NC DOT that the city would administer outdoor dining for DOT. And if you remember, we took DOT standards and the city's standards, and we married them to kind of cut down on confusion. Tonight, you have a request that primarily deals with outside of Dickinson Avenue, but I'm gonna walk you through what those changes are. The first off, so everything you see in green is the outdoor dining area, and then that one red line along Dickinson, again, that's the, that's the one that's a little different, that's a DOT-maintained section. So with that, one of the requests with this change is to just rename it, so from Uptown to Downtown Outdoor Dining Permit, as you probably know, Uptown Greenville changed its name, so that was just part of just basically having the references match, and we're not having people looking for Uptown and Downtown. And then the other one that's across the board is that, because this is outdoor dining, to extend the time for tables, chairs, or any kind of improvements, that they don't have to be removed or secured, now it's at 1:00, this request is to advance it to 2:08, and this is a.m. in the morning, right, so from 1:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. These particular changes do not apply to Dickinson, because we still have to use DOT standards. So currently, as, as, as again, we tried to marry those standards, it was a five-foot unobstructed sidewalk or path to comply with ADA. And so this request is from five feet to four feet, and I've got a little diagram that'll show you what that means. And so, if you can see, you're sort of looking down on it, this brown stripe, I guess, at the top, that would be like the front of the restaurant, you can see you have some tables and chairs, and then that blue line that goes through, that's essentially the pedestrian path, whether you're walking, in a wheelchair, what have you. And so this request is to have the minimum to be forty-eight inches. And again, that only applies to everything outside of Dickinson Avenue. And then the other thing is to increase outdoor dining for these uses. Currently, right now, the only business that can have outdoor dining is a restaurant, Blackbeard Coffee Roasters, had some tables and chairs. And so part of this request is to expand the uses, and those uses would include a bar 2022, microbrewery, micro-distillery, and/or a beer or wine store, again, in the, in the outdoor dining area only, so not on Greenville Boulevard. And with that, this is just for anyone who's interested, this is a very abbreviated process for how it works, so again, if you're, I'm gonna talk like this text amendment was approved. So if you're any of those kind of businesses and you're in the downtown area, we have application process that you submit to the planning department. You have to give us a scale drawing of what your sidewalk looks like, and then the tables and chairs and accessories that you would like to have. We would send that plan out to various different reviewers, Greenville Bul- Boulevard, geez, the Greenville Police Department, Fire Rescue, Engineering, and then we also look at it. We will add comments, ask you to tweak or change something to meet the standards, and basically, at the end of the day, if you can get approval from all of those reviewers, we basically give you a permit, and then you would have your tables and chairs, and it needs to be in accordance with your plan. And so that's just a real abbreviated area of how someone would want to obtain an outdoor permit. With that, I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. My mic on? Nope. Thank you very much. Currently, are coffee shops, like ice cream and tea shops, are those classified as restaurants?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one. So what would the impact, Shante, be as we think of expanding Bar 2022, 2022, with the discussions that we're having? Would this apply, or would this still be downtown?
It still is only downtown, so the business has to be in the, the green area on the map. So again, those businesses are, would be located outside, so that it doesn't, it doesn't affect them per se.
Just wanted to be clear with all the mention of the distilleries and breweries.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Just a quick follow-up question. I love, and have always loved, the outdoor dining concept, would love to see it spread far and wide. Is it allowed in other parts of the city, or it's just not under these regulations? Or?
It's not, because if you think of outside of the downtown area, restaurants are set up very differently. If they have a sidewalk, it's typically along Greenville Boulevard or Evan Street, right? So there isn't an outdoor dining allowed, and typically, those are, if you would think about, that's where, I'm gonna say, heavy and high-speed traffic are along those areas. So that is not what we have in the downtown. Downtown is very much different than once you get across 10th Street.
I would love to see that expanded, because we do have, and I agree, we don't want it on Greenville Boulevard, although if you're set back far enough, you know, why not? You know, because we have parking lots. I'm thinking of Arlington Village, I'm thinking of Vindale, I know outside the restaurant over there. You know, I'm thinking of all the areas where it'd be nice to have outdoor dining.
So I'll just say a couple of caveats. Your parking lot is your parking lot, and that's where cars should park. You can't supplant parking to put tables and chairs at. I know that COVID changed the world a little bit, but that's not possible. And then the other piece is, is when you have, I'm just gonna say McDonald's, when you have the entrance ways into the doors, you, that is not a dining area. That is supposed to be for ingress and egress out, that, that's not set up by building code where you could put tables and chairs out at. So it's a little different.
There's, but there's plenty of space to have outdoor dining, I just, it concerns me that, are we basically prohibiting outdoor dining in other parts of the city? Because that would be too bad.
Well, it depends on where it is. For, for example, it's not exactly the same, but Chico's has outdoor dining, and they have it on their own property. So if you have the ability to add outdoor dining and have a part of your building, that's fine. What I'm saying is, is you can't supplant parking spaces to put tables and chairs in.
So there's places that have it.
Yeah. Just not on a sidewalk.
That's correct. It's not like at the entrance to the door. You can have outdoor dining on your own property. The, the difference here is downtown, typically, your building is your property, right? So there is an ability to have outdoor dining on your property. So that's why the sidewalk is really the only option downtown.
And I guess just, you know, this, again, this is something that I would like to see expand far and wide, as we, as we become a more walkable city, as we add sidewalks, greenways, and open spaces, and, and we get away from such a car-centric orientation. I would love to see sidewalk dining and more shared public open spaces like that to become part of our city landscape, and that, that's probably beyond tonight's discussion, but it's something I, I would love to see.
Right. Well, and here's an example that just came to me, and that's Starbucks, right up at 10th Street. They have outdoor dining right outside of the building. Obviously, they have, you know, wrought iron barriers around it, so that is outdoor dining, but it's on Starbucks property, and it's obviously on a raised grade, and it does have some, again, some kind of wrought iron fencing around it to protect them from the traffic.
Right, and they're also-
So it is available, is my only point. It is available.
And it's also setback from Greenville Boulevard, because your point is well taken there, I just, when I think of the vision for the city, when we are less car-centric and more people-centric, and we are adding more and more sidewalks all the time, that they might be able to accommodate outdoor dining. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Robinson?
Some clarification for me, so the sidewalk downtown, like on Cotent Street, what's the average width? I know they're not exactly the same, but what would be an average width of the sidewalk in front of those various buildings on Cotent and Fifth?
In my mind's eye, right along Cotent, if you were to look between Reed Circle, like Fifth Street, Fourth Street, those are gonna vary, you're gonna get maybe seven, eight feet, if you're lucky.
It's not easy.
So, so those areas are gonna be tight, and it may be that either, A, you don't have room, or B, you, you may have to scale down your tables and chairs. Most tables and chairs with outdoor dining are typically the little bistro tables with the chairs on either side of it. So it can be tight in certain places, we don't have uniformity with our sidewalks, so there are some places that are wider than others. So it may not be possible for a few places, if they have a very narrow sidewalk, to be able to squeeze in the tables, the chairs, and then still maintain that forty-eight-inch clearance.
And my other question is, the tables and chairs can stay out until 2:00 in the morning?
They can stay out till 2:00. You can either bring them in, or you can stack them and secure them against the building.
Thank you, those are my questions.
All right, any other questions? Seen none, public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Sharifatoum.
Travis Hixson.
We're the owners of Agave, and just here if you guys have any questions.
All right, any questions, applicants?
So you don't serve any food, is that correct?
No, we serve, we're open from 11:00 a.m. until 1:00 a.m., and we serve coffee, smoothies, and then cocktails in the evening.
So till 1:00 at night?
Mm-hmm.
And you serve, again, what?
Coffee, smoothies, hot chocolate, tea during the daytime, and then even we transition into a cocktail lounge.
Okay, thank you. So 1:00 in the morning, you're serving nothing but alcohol?
Pardon me?
You're serving only alcohol?
No, that's not true. We're serving everything on the menu right up until close.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You can go down there at 1:00 a.m. and get a smoothie.
Don't plan on doing that.
No, surpriseingly, a lot of people drink coffee at the end of the night, and which, I'm surprised, but a lot of people do.
And state law prohibits bars, which is unfortunate, prohibits bars from serving food. I think that you should be able to, but anyway, that's your business model, and that's our current law, we have to work within. I had one question for you, though, do you find that people are using your outdoor tables?
We haven't been able to use them.
You haven't, haven't done yet?
No, but we do, like was mentioned, they are small bistro-style tables, so it's one seat and one small table.
Mm-hmm, I mean, I, I love the idea, but I will save my comments for later.
This also allows us to put a hostess stand as well, which is one thing we're unable to do at this, at this time, so that when customers come up, we can greet them and have a seating there so they can sit down before we can-
We do operate like a restaurant, so it is reservation style, so you can come up. If there isn't a table available, the hostess stand will allow you to leave your phone number, you can walk anywhere downtown, and you have 10 minutes to get back to your table when it comes available. So we have a tax-based reservation system.
Thank you.
I just have a comment, I just wanted to thank both of you for investing in downtown. It's a beautiful space, it really is. It's very unique to the area, and it's, it was a total renovation, and it's really a special little, little spot. So thank you for doing something of such great quality in our downtown area, it really is much appreciated, and it helps to raise the bar for quality for other businesses around you, so thank you very much.
One intended.
And we would love to see more places utilize the, the dining, outdoor dining, like you spoke earlier, I love the environment, I love the feel, it, it's very inviting, it's very lively, you see people outside, you wanna, you wanna gravitate towards them, so.
All right, any other questions? Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, you have three minutes. Seen none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Seen none, public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion or a motion. No, no discussion? No one? No one at all?
No one.
No one? Councilmember Blackburn?
No one. I could not be more excited about this request. I would like to echo what Councilmember Scully said, this is an absolutely gorgeous establishment, thank you for your investment in our downtown, thank you for what you've brought, how it's changed the landscape, I just love driving by it, it looks nice, I like the imagination and creativity that went into it, but this request, to me, really does what we want our downtown to do, which is, as you mentioned, be inviting. I, I would like to see, you know, other establishments take advantage of outdoor dining, but I'm delighted to say that this is an idea that I fully support and approve of, and after those comments, we'll make the motion to approve it.
Second.
Okay, all right, so we got a motion by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Willis, Councilmember Robinson?
I'm gonna vote for the motion, but I have a concern that I hope, first off, I want to say, I think it's a great idea to have outdoor dining, and when I think of outdoor dining, I think of getting a sandwich or food and going out and sitting at a table, and, you know, at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, that may take place with a pizza, pizza or something, but I'm concerned for a couple of reasons. Number one, if they're seven to eight feet wide, and you've got four feet ingress into that with a table, and you know what happens, if you're sitting at a table, people come by and they wanna chat with you, right? And so now you've ingress more into the sidewalk, and what I worry about is, you know, having been a criminal defense lawyer, I know how a lot of confrontations happen, you bump into somebody, or bump into their girlfriend, or whatnot, or the boyfriend, and, and then there's a street right there, so I do have a concern. I know the ordinance provides for safe and reasonable manner, I'm all for outdoor dining, but I hope everybody is careful about that. Plus, somebody that has a disability needs a little more sometimes than two feet to walk past a venue, so I hope we'll be mindful of that, too. That's my concern. I will support the motion, but I, I can just see, you know, an event happening where somebody's had way too much to drink, and somebody's sitting at a table, some people gather around, somebody walks by, bumps into another person, and we've got a brawl on the sidewalk, and then you've got chairs and tables which can become deadly weapons, and then somebody's out in the streetway. And I know everybody's saying I may be, be a Debbie Downer, but for what I do for a living, I know these things that I think of happen in reality, and that's the sad part about it, so I hope those who engage in putting these things out there do a good job of policing it, and I have no reason that they'll doubt it, I don't doubt that they'll do that, but I think it's a great idea to have outdoor dining, it's certainly a good look for our city, but I hope we're also, at the same time, mindful of those who are using the sidewalks, including those with disabilities, and, and if we see people kind of loitering to kind of keep the traffic moving, so we don't run into that kind of problem that I just described. But with that, I'm still, I'm gonna vote for the motion.
All right, any, any other comments? Councilmember Scully?
I shared that concern with the Councilmember Robinson. I went by there today with Mr. Hixson to look at the property, and I am happy that this will require an application of the planning department, so that we can be careful about who we allow to do this, and make sure that it's always in a good location with a good plan in place that's gonna keep people safe. And I spoke to them, they currently close at 1:00, so this would be cleaned up by 1:00, and there is some busy activity that happens before 1:00, and I agree with you, but I think most of the heavy foot traffic of people are exiting bars and stuff like that, it's gonna happen between 1:00 and 2:00 and after. And I'm confident that they understand those issues, and will do a good job getting things the egress and flow of the sidewalk. I believe that they understand, and that's important to their business as well.
All right, any other discussion?
I'll just say that my thought process was similar.
All right. So motions have been made, probably second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
opposed say nay?
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number six.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Item number six, ordinance requested by the Planning and Development Services Department for the initial adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, and the updated official zoning map. I gladly ask our Director of Planning and Development, Les Everett, to come forward to start this presentation.
All right, thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
For over, well, almost two years, we've been talking about these three letters, UDO. We've been talking about them a lot, and you're well aware. We'd just like to take an opportunity to tell you, over the two years, I've been extremely proud of our staff and the involvement and all the actions taken as a group to make this happen. We also, you know, have had countless discussions with citizens, stakeholders, and we appreciate all of their input and direction and help through constructing this. So at this time, we have contracted with Inspire, Place Making Collective, and I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Sarah Sinatra, who has been a great leader in getting us this far. So we've hit a major milestone, so now I'm gonna turn it over to Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me. I'm really excited that we are actually at the adoption phase. It's, I've been really honored that the city chose to work with us, and it has been such a pleasure to work with your residents, your boards, the task force, and particularly your staff, who's really been tremendous through this process. So I'm gonna go through the presentation, and obviously, you know, hear for questions and anything that you'd like to know about the process, or any questions you might have on what we've done. So things we wanted to just briefly go over is the purpose, goals of the project, milestones, public engagement, and then the next steps, because there's still the next steps that go for this process. Just a brief overview of the timeline. We originally met with the, we originally kicked off the project in April of 2024, and had our first task force meeting in May, and the task force has really been instrumental in this whole process, giving us great feedback, really shaping the discussions and changes that we've made throughout the ordinance, and had our last task force meeting on August seventh. So we worked, like I said, with residents, with the task force. We had a lot of public events, and I'm gonna talk through a little bit about that as well because that really helped shape the process. So when we talk about a unified development ordinance, UDO, it talks about certain sections of the overall code of ordinances. Everybody's familiar with this, the large code of ordinances. That has some things that are not included in this, so we just wanted to clarify, you know, the things that are included. Subdivision, zoning, and conditional zoning, which we'll talk about as well, development review, vegetation. It combines chapters four and five of the regulations into a comprehensive document. This helps the public, people who wanna develop, people that wanna know what could be developed on their neighboring property and so forth. It also brings alignment with the current ordinances with the city's current comprehensive plans. We've added graphics. We've made sure that it becomes a more user-friendly document. When you, you know, today I actually printed it out and saw that it's this big book, and usually, you know, we use it a lot online. Everybody, you know, is used to using things online, and so when you have those graphics, that kinda helps split it up. It really helps the reader. Our goals, what we set off right from the beginning, were to have authentic public involvement, and I'll talk a little bit about that, to have a transparent process, to make sure that website was up to date, that people knew where to go to get information, and to make it predictable. The overall document needed to be predictable and user-friendly. Like I mentioned, this started in April, May of last year. We had seven open houses and then five city attended events. We had surveys, we had websites throughout the process. So let's talk a minute about the task force, because they were really instrumental. I think some members of the task force are here, and they've been really helpful through the process. It was a group of professionals, citizens, and staff working with, some of them had a working knowledge of the ordinances, its process, and some of them knew about their shortcomings, and that was really fruitful discussion. Gave a really diverse perspective on the community and the future. And they also served as ambassadors for the project. A lot of them had their own networks and were able to get people out there and tell, you know, you should be aware of X, Y, and Z because it could affect you. So it got the word out as well, so that was really helpful. And just to give thanks again for the task force members. It was a large group, and we were really grateful for the continued involvement. The meetings were all open to the public. They were held in City Hall. Here's just a listing of the events. Like I mentioned, we had online engagement activities, we had just different surveys and feedback. All of that is memorialized and held and provided to the city so that there is a record of any of the comments that were provided. We had seven open houses. This was really important because when we, wherever we hold these type of events, you don't wanna just have something at City Hall. You know, this could be quite intimidating for somebody to come up and present or give their feedback. So we try to have these type of events in local places throughout the community that people can just talk to us and tell us things that they might be interested in, or that they have concerns with. So that was really important. All of that information is captured in a public engagement report that's been provided to the staff. So over and above that, which we find is, was really critical, and, you know, a testament to the support that your staff really wanted for this to be a successful project, is that even over and above the very more formal open houses we had, there were a number of events, there were five that are listed on this, on the presentation, that were already happening. And those are the people that typically are not coming to some of the more formal, you know, unified development ordinance events. They might be going to the Juneteenth celebration, the active adult senior social, or a national night out. They're just gonna be there anyway. So it's a more captive audience of people that may not have typically chatted with us. So the staff went with hard copies of the survey, as well as QR code of how to get onto the survey and the website information to get more info out. So every time there was one of these events, I'd get a stack of surveys over from Chanté that was great, that would, you know, from people that typically didn't know about this event, you know, what we were doing, the code work that was going on. So it was great to be able to hear from different members of the population. So when we got all that info, we actually created a spreadsheet that talked about some of the most critical issues that the people were most concerned about. So that was really helpful. We had, like I mentioned, the surveys, the attendance, this provides some of that information, but we had a lot of common themes. Some of it related directly to the UDO, and we were able to address that. Some of it is not specifically related, but it stays front of mind, and so it allows, you know, the city to know that these are themes that are really important and need to be thought through in any kind of future planning efforts and so forth. So a common theme that was brought up was the importance of pedestrian, cyclist, and transit users throughout the city. A need for affordable housing throughout the city, not for, just for existing residents, but for young families and professionals and people who wanna remain in the area. So we felt that we've made some adjustments to the code based on this feedback about the affordable housing, also about the accessory dwelling units. People wanted to have them as an option, but didn't wanna have some parameters, wanted to have some control of what that looked like, what that meant. It was a really important topic, and it was discussed at length with the task force, which was really helpful. It was also noted that there was lack of essential services north of the Tar River, like pharmacies, grocery stores. So what we did, we did a zoning analysis to make sure that we're not creating additional barriers, that there's, that the properties are zoned appropriately, so if someone wanted to come in and develop, they wouldn't have to go through hoops in order to do that. And then there was a repeated concern for environmental impacts of development on the city, particularly on trees and forest density, and we made some significant changes to the ordinance to accommodate where we could. So the ordinance is broken down into nine chapters. I'm going to just go briefly over what are the significant changes that came out of that. Article one, it's general provisions and definitions. We added definitions for all uses. That might not seem like a big deal, but when you're trying to identify, when staff's trying to determine what a use is, you can then go back and it's clearly defined. We have graphics for measurements. A lot of times, like we added, and you'll see in the PowerPoint, the presentation, it becomes challenging for folks if you've got maybe an odd-shaped lot, or we're using terminology about what a corner setback is, you know, you would think it would mean from the corner, but actually means from the side street. So those type of things that people can visually be informed and have, and if they go and meet with staff, they can see, okay, that's what that means. I can go back to my own house and understand that a little bit better, too. So we wanted to make sure a lot of that was refined. We also modified tobacco shops to include tobacco and hemp retail, including vape stores. Under article two, the major changes were to reorganize and consolidate policies and procedures, really update review procedures. Whenever we start this type of process with any community that we're working with, we always ask, what's the process that you follow, what's actually in the code? Because a lot of times, what's in the code is a little outdated, so we like to make sure that things like, that are typically the process that an applicant would follow is codified in the code and makes sense, works for staff, works for the boards, and works really for the applicants. Under article three, we developed tables for dimensional standards for each zoning district. That just goes, it's not that we made changes, per se, to the dimensional standards, meaning the setbacks and so forth. I mean, that would create non-conformities, which we have challenges with and we can't particularly do, but instead, we just made it more user-friendly. We collapsed some districts that were not in use, and then we allowed for accessory dwelling units, cottage courts, and tiny homes, and tiny home communities. So I'm gonna talk a little bit more in detail about those because those were really as an effort to try to build in some more affordability. Another process that we've added is conditional zoning. So conditional zoning has been utilized throughout the state, it's been used in Pitt County, but it hasn't been adopted till, you know, hopefully now. It's the process that, a rezoning process, that specifies that individual development condition, that have individual development conditions. So the landowner would then agree to the conditions, and then it would appear as an application before council. So it's a really great way for the landowner to say, you know, even though I'm coming in and there could be, you know, thirty different uses on a site, I'm really only interested in maybe three or four of those uses. So it limits, and then the neighbors have a good understanding of, okay, so we're only looking at these three limits, not everything that's housed in that zoning district. It also gives an opportunity for the neighbor, because there's a requirement to have a neighborhood meeting, to say, we're okay potentially with the use, but we'd like a bigger buffer. And they can say, you know, that's reasonable, that makes sense. And so it allows the public, I think, more of an opportunity to kinda talk a lot of that through. The process would be a pre-application consultation with staff, then they would have that structured neighborhood meeting, and so that's really important, that's done at that level. They'd have the signatures from the landowners, then it would go to council, and then it would result in a zoning map amendment. We've included the districts and what it would look like, so that's just how it would be in the ordinance. So these are some conditions. So you could potentially limit the uses. If you had a number of uses within that base zoning district, there'd be an opportunity that the applicant would come forward and say, I'm not interested, you know, I wanted a grocery store, I'm not interested in a gas station, I'm happy to say I'm not going to move forward with that use. That's something that can happen in a conditional zoning process. Dimensions, this, it could be increased or setbacks could be increased or reduced height. There could be site features to reduce development potential. This is, again, like the screening, the buffering, there could be some of that added on. We can't add requirements that the city wouldn't otherwise be authorized to regulate. So staying within this chapter, some of the other more significant changes, this is the chapter where most of the changes occurred, was we created tiny home standards. We're gonna talk separately about tiny homes, and then what we're calling tiny homes communities, which is a grouping of them. Tiny home standards really came out of a discussion that we found that in some of the older neighborhoods, there are lots that are basically carved out, that they're considered substandard. So they're smaller lots that are, in all intents and purposes, kind of unbuildable in the sense that you'd need lots and lots of variances and waivers in order to get anything developed on it. So as an opportunity to provide, somebody that wouldn't have to go through that entire process, they'd be able to develop a tiny home. So the lot would need to be three thousand square feet, which is, again, you know, it's half the size, if not more, than a typical standard lot, but they'd be able to develop one of these, and then, you know, the picture of what could be like a tiny home. And the main point here is that you cannot create new lots for tiny homes. So the intent is that if you've already have, if the neighborhood already has a three thousand square foot lot that really wouldn't be able to be developed, now there's an opportunity to put a structure on there and have a family or a person living in that home. But it cannot be developed for that, it has to be existing lot. So the tiny home community is a different concept, and this would be for multiple, it would be for a subdivision. So if someone wanted to come in and build tiny homes as an opportunity, again, for an affordable option, you'd have to have a minimum of ten individual lots. So the idea would be that it would come in as a community, there'd be ten that would be coming in for that subdivision. And it's, again, to provide lower maintenance costs, lower housing price option. Another option of a different product that we're proposing, and this has been, again, with the idea of providing more affordable options, and just really providing choices, having more options and choices, is a cottage court concept. These are, again, on smaller lots, but what is unique here is that it does have shared green space, so that there is like a shared yard between the different units, so that even though they're, you know, they could be standalone or they could be attached, they would, they would all have that shared common courtyard. Under article four, this is where we talk about additional standards for different uses. And so we've developed accessory dwelling unit standards. This was something that a lot of the public had said that they were interested in, and we heard about this when we were at the, at the open house events. However, it was a real question, we talked about it a lot during the task force meeting, and how do we make sure we're protecting neighbors, how we're not, you know, adding in other challenges? So we've put in some standards about that the ADU can be up to thirty-five percent of the primary dwelling unit, that it has to meet the setbacks of the underlying district. So what that means is typically, if you have like a shed or detached garage on your property, you can have a reduced setback. You know, the idea is that you have it in the rear and it could be reduced setback. In this case, the accessory dwelling unit would, because someone will be living there. We wanted to make sure it was respecting the setbacks of the primary structure. So you'd have to have a lot that was significant enough to kind of accommodate that. There could be an opportunity, you know, that it was within the overall structure, that it was attached, so that's an opportunity as well. And you cannot have any transfer of ownership, so there couldn't be, it couldn't be sold Under the use standards and distance separation, we have modified to include tobacco and hemp retail. This would also include vape shops as well. We've included, we've added additional distance separations. This was a, everybody basically agreed. This is something that everybody wanted, there was no question about that. And I'm talking about rope lighting here. It could be for any business, it just happens to fall very typically in line with these type of establishments, that no rope lighting, static flashing, or moving would be allowed. It would include a one-year amortization to remove the non-conforming rope lighting as well. So this is the section that we heard a lot from the public on at our open houses, we heard from during our task force meeting, and we made some changes. We reintroduced a buffer yard that was eliminated, so Buffer Yard B. We also added opacity standards so that the buffer has to be thicker, that it has to function more like a green wall and just can't, just be less than that. We've increased the native- just can't, just be less than that. We've increased the native species requirement to 50% for new plantings and updated the table. We've increased the street tree requirement. Previously, it was two trees per 100 feet. Now we require three. And we're adding requirements for trees on single-family and two-family lots. The code previously said that there was, you could change out, you can substitute trees for shrubs, so we removed that requirement. And then we've incorporated some tree protection standards from public works, and now we have some graphics in there to make it a little easier to understand, and as well as incentives for saving trees. So we've, this is the table that describes it, which is a little challenging to understand, too. So we've tried to supplement that all with graphics that have a key, and folks can kind of go through that and understand what would be the expectation. We also have now credits for preserving existing trees. So while you can plant new trees, there's a benefit to having that existing canopy. You typically have an older tree, typically has a larger canopy. So we wanted to give more incentive. This is, this is an option. You're not required. We have, as we've all mentioned many times, there are some local law limitations on forcing and requiring additional tree protection. So we've tried to make it more attractive in order to do that. So we're adding some tree preservation options. We've also required a single-family and two-family to actually provide trees, and we have the acreage sizes and the minimum requirements included in the code. Article VI, we didn't make significant changes. We just removed things like certain loading space requirements, which are not being used, and it's just additional pavement that gets added. But what, the most significant was to revise a sidewalk, deferment to a payment in lieu option. I'll go through that in a moment. So under the subdivision and site design changes, we added an option to provide a fee in lieu, rather than providing the actual construction of the sidewalk. It just gives more options. And then a fee in lieu for recreation areas, to allow a developer to pay into the site, to a fund for the siting of future parks. If they chose not to provide a small lot within their subdivision, there'd be an opportunity to pay into a fund for, you know, something that would be more accessible to the public, and just another option. They're not required to do that. They're required to provide the open space, or they can provide it, but if they'd like to pay into the fund, they have that option as well. And then under signs, this was basically just to remove legal risks, to make sure that we were providing signage that meant, that met current federal law. There's been a lot of changes in sign requirements. We wanted to make sure that all of this met the code requirements. We drafted tables for dimension standards for requirements, and we created graphics for each sign type, as well as measurement standards. We had definitions provided for non-conforming uses, and standards for non-conforming reductions, and clarified what this meant. So a lot of that was just clarification. So the next steps, if this is adopted, would be to go through training, and that would be in probably January, February time. A lot of times when we write an ordinance, as you know, it's like effective kind of immediately. This is, this is a big undertaking. We want people to have, not just the public, but the staff, to be able to be comfortable with it. So when folks come in and they have questions, they can easily direct them to where the information is. And then the implementation, or the effective date, would really be, we were expecting it to be in spring. So it gives the public enough time, we're able to provide the information. I also just wanted to mention that through this process, we've, you know, had staff reviewing it from the, you know, city manager's office, and legal, and of course, the planning department. But we've also contracted with Pointer Sprawl, and they provided outside legal review as well, to make sure that we're providing a document that is consistent with local and federal laws. So just want to say thank you, and certainly here for questions.
You don't have any questions, Ryan?
I do, actually, I do, yes.
With nine, was it nine chapters or not, articles?
I have a question about each chapter.
No, not you.
Buckle up. No. Thank you very much. This is...
I'm sorry, I forgot.
Is there more presentation?
It's just one thing that we always do, is, which is, this went in front of PNC last month, and they unanimously recommended approval of it.
So, thank you very much, again. And yes, this, just, I commend all the work that's gone into this. I know the task force did amazing work, and we've had a lot of meetings about this, to keep us informed and up-to-date. A couple of things I was surprised about, that I'd like to ask about, with the accessory dwelling unit being allowed in R9S, I was told it would be allowed in R9, but not R9S, because S is a special distinction for single-family homes only. So that was a surprise to me, that it was also going to be allowed in R9S. I was, because I asked the question, and I was told that it would only be allowed in R9, not R9S.
It would be, it is allowed, accessory dwelling units are allowed in any residential districts that aren't what I call the sixes, 6S, 6A, R6, and CDF. And that's because the minimum lot requirement is 6,000 square feet. So it is allowed in those other districts like R9, but it has to be on a lot with a single-family dwelling. So if it's a duplex, you can't have an ADU. And the lot has to be conforming, and the structure itself has to be conforming, and then you have to have enough room to put the ADU.
My objection is to it being allowed in an S-zoned residential district, because the S zoning, by nature, says this is for single-family homes only. That's what the S zoning is. I mean, that's my understanding of what the S zoning is about.
It is, it is. I would just say that would be something for, up for council discussion. Is it possible? Yes. But the intent of an ADU is that it is only with a single-family dwelling.
Once you introduce an ADU, though, you no longer have, you are no longer adhering to the spirit or the letter of what the S district is about, which is a single-family home only.
I understand what you're saying, yes.
My next question is, I feel like there might have been a language hiccup, because with the trees, the substit, the point about substituting shrubs for trees, it says you can't substitute trees for shrubs. My understanding is that the request was, you can't substitute shrubs for trees, because shrubs were being substituted for trees. And yet, the language I see says, you can't substitute...
We're saying the same thing, which is, if you owe me a tree, you can't give me shrubs. You have to give me a tree.
But the language says, remove the ability to substitute trees for shrubs, instead of shrubs for trees.
Was that on a slide? Yeah. You can't substitute, you can't have a, you can't substitute a tree for shrub.
And my understanding is, what the request was, and what the desire of the task force and many members of the community was to say, remove the ability to substitute shrubs for any size tree. So this is not at all what was requested by the community.
I think we're, I think we're on the same page. Maybe we're saying it differently, but the intent is, is if you have to give me trees, you can't give me shrubs to substitute, because shrubs are typically short.
And that was, but that's not what it says here.
We can look at the code.
Okay. I think it's a language hiccup.
That's a slide, right? That's not the specific language taken out of the ordinance. So maybe when it was paraphrased, it was just paraphrased incorrectly. But we're on the same page with what we're agreeing to.
Okay, because, yeah, I, I mean, it could just be a language hiccup. I just wanted to make sure, because this was a very important request, and frankly, a very simple request to fix.
It was included in the ordinance. I can assure you, it's included in the ordinance.
And in the ordinance, it does say, remove the ability to substitute trees for shrubs.
Correct.
You can assure me of that.
We can, yes. The language has definitely been modified to not, to not permit a shrub being able to be replaced for a tree.
No. What I'm asking is, when you're developing a lot, and you have to have a certain amount of vegetation, previously, you could substitute two shrubs...
Right.
For one tree.
Right. You can no longer do that.
Okay. My next question is, right, when you were talking about signs, something about federal requirements for signs, what in the world do we have to do with signs?
They're very, very specific federal requirements. For instance, you cannot regulate content. So anybody can say what they want on a sign. We used to, in a lot of cities, be able to say, like, you had to have your business license to say, like, what that business was, and it had to match what the permit was going to be on the site. Can't do that. So if somebody wants to have, you know, a nail salon, and then name it, like, the name of like a restaurant, they have every, you know, and it's a different name, they have the ability to do that. We cannot regulate the content. That's one of the changes, but there are many significant changes.
Okay. I mean, if it's a federal requirement, we have to follow it. I just was really interested in what in the world they were getting involved with our signs for, but, okay. That's it for my questions. Thank you.
That was kind of mild. I expected more. All right, any other questions?
I just want to make a comment. From our briefing, just so that I make, make the statement publicly, as it relates to the fee in lieu options, that we will be continuing those discussions, particularly as it relates to the recreation areas for fee in lieu, that we will be continuing those discussions, and adding that conversation also to looking at the comprehensive plan. And my concern with that has been communicated, that, number one, in neighborhoods like those in the southwest corridor of Dickinson, that you have residential neighborhoods that don't have parks, and that was part of the wish of the Horizons Plan. And then also for underserved communities, that we tend to negate or divest in having parks and recreation opportunities for those neighborhoods. And so, even though we've had this discussion in the briefing, I want to just make sure that I say it publicly, that we will be continuing that conversation.
And I'll echo that publicly as well. I think the way we went about this is it generated additional conversation about items that would take us to the next step. I think we all are in agreement that we need as much recreational opportunities as we can. So that'll be something that we continue to look at in the next level of the ordinance building.
But thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Sinatra. I remember meeting you back in 2024, when this process started, and being new to council, not exactly knowing what to expect, what this process was going to look like. But I appreciate your leadership and working with the task force. We've all seen situations where it's been a good working relationship, and then other situations where there was things that were left to be desired. And overall, I feel like this has been a very pleasant process, and an effective process. So I appreciate your leadership with your firm, and working well with our staff. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
As well as with our city manager's office keeping us abreast, and having the briefings, and being able to stay informed of the process, and all of the community involvement and whatnot. It's been an enlightening process, but very involved as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions?
I'd just like to thank you for such an excellent presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate all of your time.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The public area is now open. Those speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. This is four, yeah.
Four.
All right. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
We got one for...
Are you, is this for or against?
It's for, with some modifications. And one of the reasons that I wanted to say something now is that a lot of us love animals, and we see the connections between all life. But a woman who has written a book called The Mother Tree, and her name is Dr. Suzanne Samard, talks about the connections between trees, and how they communicate with one another. And they communicate through the roots. And just like a grandmother would be taking care of her grandchildren, a mother tree takes care of the little trees. And they have found, and there's a lot of scientific research that you can look up about this, that if you plant trees next to a mother tree, they grow much quicker, because you have all of the microorganisms in the soil that they are sending out. The way that we have been doing things in Greenville is that we have a wonderful ordinance when somebody buys property, that how they have to take care of it. But the very minute they want to develop it, then they can clearcut it. Well, if you clearcut and go back and plant trees, you don't have those microorganisms and all of the things that help trees grow. And when you destroy all of that, you also impact wildlife. We have fewer birds, we have fewer raccoons and everything that needs, that need the trees. So I really am for this UDO. I was a part of it. But I just really wish all of you got, sent to you, some points. And the one thing that I'm talking about now is trees in the development process. If you could add that we, that the developer, when he's planning, that he meets with an urban forester or vegetation manager, whatever you call it, to look at ways to save trees on that property. I was really saddened at a recent relief meeting, when it was told us that there are no champion trees on the registry from Greenville. And champion trees have to be a certain size. But if we cut everything, we won't have tree canopy, we won't have champion trees. And I want us, I love Greenville, and I want us to have all of that. So what I'm asking is that you add this. And you've got the copies of it. All of you were sent the copy of this. So thank you, because I do want it passed, but I would love to see this added. And I have one last question, that concerns me a little bit. On the conditional zoning, the line that says that there can be no input at the hearing, I'm not sure, do you all want that as a council? Because it seems like at the hearing, that PNC and the council would want to give input. So I would like to see you have that ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of the applicant, may come forward. You have three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
Hello. My name is Kat Dale. Many of you know me. I'm the vice chair of your multimodal transportation commission. But I'm also here on behalf of FROGS today, so Friends of Greenville Greenways. So I'm going to talk to you a little about active transportation. In general, I definitely am in support of the UDO. I think it's an amazing step forward for Greenville. It's been super exciting to watch the process over the last two years. And I want this to be passed, like, as soon as the rest of you, I'm sure. Like, let's get it on the ground, let's get it implemented. There are a few changes that I think could be really, really effective, if we make them super small, that I think could, could, could do good things. And they could be things that we make as like a future discussion, if you are set on adopting stuff tonight. But I would ask that you direct staff to investigate these things, and bring them before you, before the end of the year. So those things are, in Section 9... So those things are in section nine dash four dash seven three three. Sarah, I hope you're taking notes over there. There is no requirement right now for developers to add pedestrian access from the frontage of the road to the front of the business. So if you drive around and you look at any recent development in Greenville, so the Royal Farms or the Ked Plasma that's on 10th, they are required to build a sidewalk on the frontage road. So that's how we're getting new sidewalks in Greenville, yay. But if a pedestrian walks up, wants to walk into Ked Plasma, they have to then enter the roadway or on the grassy median and there's no crosswalk, there's no sidewalk, there's no way to actually walk from the frontage road to the entrance to the building. So this is a really easy change to make and it would just require developers to provide safe pedestrian connectivity from the street frontage to the entrance of any developments offering public services. This is, this is standard and UDOs from other places. You look at Sebelon, you look at Raleigh, they all have this line in there that requires pedestrian access. Okay, so I think that's a big one. We've heard a lot about pedestrian access, like sidewalk dining. You know, you were asking, mentioning disability rights and requirements. Like I think it's a big one that would be an easy change. And then the second one, Sarah, in her, in her presentation, the top thing listed was multimodal transportation, right? Pedestrians, cyclists, okay? There is no mention of basically anything about bikes in the UDO besides maybe a mention of a bike or greenway path. There's also no mention in the current manual of standard designs that we have set up for how, what our roads look like. So maybe that's another conversation that we work on, direct staff time too. But there's really no mention of bikes or bike lanes or bike infrastructure. So one easy amendment to make would be to section nine dash four dash seven two three, that to require bicycle facilities when an existing street is widened or a new or private street is proposed and is expected to have more than 1,500 vehicles per day or is identified for a bicycle facility in the currently adopted Guamfo Active Transportation Plan or Conference of Transportation Plan. So make that change too. Thank you so much for your time and I urge you to consider these changes. Huh?
Does she have anything else?
That's a good question.
I'm good, yeah. Seven dash four dash seven three three.
All right, he asked you a question, you can answer the question.
Oh, I can answer that.
Yeah, heck yeah you can. Yeah.
That was basically it, honestly. Yeah, just that, just that there are, there are no current standard, design standards or requirements for bikes or bike facility.
And I'd like to say thank you, Ms. Dale, because we got together and you shared all that with me. We've got it for us to take a look at with staff as well.
Yes, and I really appreciate all of you. Like I know we've been hounding you, we've been sending our shortlist, we've been meeting with the city manager. So I really appreciate you being open to these discussions. And like I said, I think the UDO is a great step forward. We talked about not making anything really, really huge, right? So small changes, but I think we, we have a number of small changes that I think could be really powerful. These are some of them, so I appreciate all your time. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the applicant may come forward? Please state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Andrea Pike. I'm not against the UDO, but I am definitely for additional changes that I think and some more massaging that needs to happen with some of the tree related issues with the new UDO. I have to say I am thankful that some changes, positive changes for trees have been made on the UDO. And there's also the whole thing about the vegetation manager, which is humongous. That, that's just going to, it's going to make such a difference in the city, I believe. The shortlist that you got, that you all received, one of the things I want to point out that is low hanging fruit that I think could probably be addressed pretty easily in the UDO are parking lots. If you look at ordinances for other cities that have better tree canopies than Greenville, you'll see things like only canopy trees are allowed in parking lots. Small trees will be used only like in the case of a, where a variance is needed, like when you have overhead utilities or something like that. So whereas right now our ordinance states for each acre of development, you need five trees, 10 small trees and 25 shrubs. It really just needs to be the big trees. It doesn't need to be the small trees. Small trees should be there in the case when a variance is needed. I'm sure you guys have noticed that Greenville has a lot of crepe myrtles. And that's because crepe myrtles are the small trees that are being used really widespread and they're overplanted. There are a lot of positives to crepe myrtles. I, and I, I understand why they get used so frequently. But it's time to switch over to some native oak trees and some other native trees that do more for our ecosystem here than what the crepe myrtles are doing for us. So I just hope that you'll consider the shortlist and maybe we can continue the conversations about the UDO. That's all I've got.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the applicant may come forward? Please state your name for the record, you have three minutes. All right, seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Good afternoon or evening, mayor and council. My name is Angela Richter. I'm a mother, environmental educator and environmental planner, fairly new to Greenville. Originally a Texan. Yeah, just I wanted to, since I hadn't been here before, take the 10 minutes and tell you a little bit about me too. I was out earlier today birding with elementary age students at River Park North. We have some great park resources already in Greenville that I utilize quite often. I'm here because I've been working with local organizations interested in this unified development code. So some of the folks that are here and many who are not here. As you know, we got together, relief, the local branch of the Sierra Club, Frogs, and formed this Green Greenville Coalition specifically about these green elements in the ordinance. A lot of these folks volunteered a lot of their time going through this ordinance and really thinking critically about how to make this city better for everyone. I spent some time looking at the public comments in Inspire's consolidated list of comments received in the UDO Open Houses, that's what it's called. You guys saw a few points up there about what was in the comments. I noticed that those were not ranked, so I wanted to tell you from what I saw in that document. The, there were only a few comments that received over 50 likes. The first one was about improving multimodal accessibility. So that was comment number one from the public and there's no mention of bike lanes. To me, that's a problem. The second comment was about saving and increasing tree canopy and there have been some changes made there, we appreciate that. I do agree with Andrea that the parking lots are a place where that's an easy fix, where we could make that important addition. The third highest comment was a grouping of comments all around Greener Greenville. They were things like parks, people talking about parks and nature access. The current draft does not reflect these community desires. So you guys did do a great job going out, meeting the community, talking to folks. But in my mind, we haven't gotten there all, all the way because those priorities have not risen to the top. A unified development ordinance is an immensely powerful tool that will shape Greenville for decades. Just as past ordinances and policies have left us with a legacy of vast parking lots, crepe myrtles, development too close to area waterways, sorry, green mills run. This UDO will have a legacy. Decades from now, the choices that you guys make will be affecting folks living here 20, 30 years from now. It's our opportunity to catch up to cities across the country that are building places that people want to live. Nature is good for people and it's good for the economy. So I'm not asking each of you guys to go out there and hug a tree, although if you want to, please do. But I am asking you to have vision and foresight. I see a lot of discussion locally about wanting to improve the local economy and local businesses, and I saw, I saw Yancey Alliance here earlier today. I think that's great, they're doing good work. People want to live in a place where natural and cultural, with great natural and cultural amenities. That's what brings people here and that's what keeps people here. Greenville is blessed with exceptional weather coming from Texas. Everyone complains about the heat in the summer and I say, what are you talking about? And we're within a biodiversity hotspot in the nation. We have, we're just gifted with an amazing, as someone who's learning the trees and the plants here for the first time, we are really gifted in that area. But we need government policies to protect and enhance all of these natural features. So if you approve the UDO as it is today, we're not taking full advantage of this opportunity. I do hear that we're talking about potentially having some of these next steps and I fully support that. So things such as a parkland dedication ordinance, I would love to see that move forward. I'm not sure where I am in my 10 minutes, can I get a time check?
You have got five minutes and 19 seconds.
Amazing, you guys get to keep hearing from me. Okay, so parkland dedication, this is something I care so, so much about. Most cities of Greenville size and larger are funding their parks in ways that Greenville is not. We're not, we're not requiring developers to put in new parks or pay for parks. So you've heard this discussion about open space? There is an open space requirement. So I believe it's 25% on a lot of these parcels, right? Open space is not a park. People don't know that it's public space, they don't know it's a park, they don't utilize it in the same way that they would a park. So what we're asking is that you're consistent with what other places like New Bern have done and set 10% of that 25% as an actual park that can either be maintained by the developer, the HOA, be deeded to the city. But that land is getting set aside anyway, why not make a public good out of it? All right, I won't go into all the details in the parks ordinance, you can talk to me later. Let's see. So I think what we're asking is that you direct staff to incorporate improvements in parkland dedication, trees and active transportation, ideally with this new ordinance. But if not, we'd love to have those conversations about what those next steps are and see that those projects, y'all are directing staff to make those things happen for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say that I did have your email pulled up that you had sent out. So, so you saved me the trouble of mentioning that, so thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward? Please state your name for the record, you have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, open for board discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right.
But I have some comments.
We got a motion by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Blackburn. Councilmember Blackburn?
With some comments and potentially a friendly amendment. This UDO, and first of all, thank you everyone who came to speak tonight. Your comments are heard and appreciated. I want to thank the task force, the, all the time and energy and effort that you put into this, the citizens group that was so involved. This uni, this unified development ordinance is one of the most significant undertakings by, certainly by our planning department and probably one of the biggest by our city. It engaged the community and we've had many small meetings amongst council where we were able to have our questions answered. And the goal for this was really simple. It was to bring city ordinances together in a logical format that, that was orderly, clear and comprehensible. And the goal was not to fundamentally alter the way our city operates, but rather to modernize our ordinances and get them all together with the clear diagrams, get them modernized with, as we saw, federal standards. So we always have to keep in mind, however, that a city, like every other living organism, is constantly changing. Its ordinances and laws must also change to reflect its progress. Changes take place over time. And likewise, needed changes with this UDO will continue to evolve to reflect our advancing vision for our city. As it stands, however, I believe the UDO reflects a balanced, stable, appropriate view for our city as it currently operates. The only, the only potentially friendly amendment I would like to add is to eliminate the R9S zoning for the accessory dwelling units. And the reason for that is, is when we have ordinances and when we have a comprehensive land use plan and when we have agreements, these documents are agreements, really agreements with the public. And that S zoning is, it, it states single family homes. And that's what the S stands for with the R9S zoning. So that's, that would be my potentially friendly amendment, just to strike the R9S from where those accessory dwelling units are allowed.
And can I ask Ms. Gooby to come forward again? And I think the whole intention was for this to be in single family homes. Only, the accessory dwellings can only, only be allowed for single family homes.
Yes.
So, I mean.
I just, I, we're, we're not being consistent. If we have a S zoning, but then we have two residences on it, it is not an S zoning. It's, it's inconsistent and it's not truthful to the public.
The, so the, an accessory unit can look differently. So it can be attached or it can be detached, right? The, the intent behind the accessory dwelling units, and I recognize Greenville is a little different, but they're renamed when I first come into planning of what they used to call granny pods or granny suites, right? So that granny was getting a little old, she didn't want to live by herself or maybe didn't need to live by herself. It was a way to have her clothes, but that she would have her own space, right? And that's still the intent behind the ADUs. I recognize that it may be used differently in Greenville because we do not regulate who lives there, right? Whether it's grandma or just a renter. I'm sorry?
Or a young adult.
That's right. And we don't regulate whether it's owner occupied or, or rent, rental property in itself. But at the end of the day, the intent of the ADU is so that you can have a, another dwelling. It is controlled by size, so we limit it to, I think, 30% of the primary dwelling. You still have to have an onsite parking space for that dwelling. So it's not a one size fits, fits all and not every lot is going to be able to even have that kind of amenity. But at the end of the day, that was the, that was the intent, right? To have a, a smaller unit on the same lot, but still has at least one parking space available to it. So that is why the S districts were included.
And I understand the concept, you can have a single family home in an R9 zoning that might have this accessory dwelling unit. If you, if you have an S designation, the S stands for single family. I just, it's just, it's not consistent and it's not transparent and it's not, it's not upfront about what's actually happening in that zoning area. If you allow two residential dwellings on a single lot, it is no longer an S type zoning.
I, I understand. And, and we do have some, not a lot, but we do have some single family neighborhoods that have R9 zoning, but it's still a single family neighborhood. And that's because that zoning district had some more options other than the S district. That is just, I'm just making the point, that's all I am.
Yeah.
Making the point.
Absolutely, like in an R9, you can have different types of housing other than single family homes. And that's why to me, it, you know, I, I love this idea, I love this use. But if we have a zoning that designates single family only, it should be single family only. Or we should get rid of the S designation, which I don't want to do. But it's just inconsistent, it's illogical and it's not transparent. So I don't know.
Okay, so I'm going to interject real quick and I understand what you're saying. I respectfully disagree with what you're saying because even though it may be a single family dwelling, to, to try to put restrictions on how they accommodate the needs of that single family is what I'm hearing you say. And so I'll use myself for an example. And my sons don't live here, but if they did and I wanted to put an ADU in my backyard so that my sons or when my great grandmother was still living, if she still wanted some independence. was still living, if she still wanted some independence, then I could see that as an option, to be able to accommodate the needs of my family. And I wouldn't want you or anyone else to have any say-so over that. So, I do agree with the ADUs for that reason, and, you know, however people choose to accommodate the needs of their single-family, in their single-family home, I actually think if it was a duplex, if the duplex was big enough and had enough space, then they could still accommodate it. But I do agree with the ADUs. The thing that jumped out to me the most, in addition to the other things that were on the shortlist, which I thought was some very good notes by the way you all, was, you know how I am about engagement, the part with no input at a hearing, that was something that jumped out at me glaringly. But, I do want to say that I disagree with you respectfully as it relates to the ADUs.
And may I add one thing, certainly within a family, and if a family wants to have, you know, an ADU, I understand that, but let's be real, this is the age of Airbnb. What is going to prevent someone from building an accessory dwelling unit that they rent out on football weekends? Or, you know, I just see that happen, and I feel that, okay, if you're in an R9 district where you know there's going to be multiple residences, and you know there's going to be additional activity within that zoning, but an R9S zoning is specifically, specifically for single-family homes only. So, I mean, your family, and putting your son back there, your great-grandmother, or, you know, any number of residential uses, but there are so many ways that this could go south. And I feel like, okay, the S zoning was designed to prevent more dense dwellings, residential uses, and that's what the whole S zoning is about. I'm just saying, if we're having the S zoning, we should be respectful of what it calls for.
Like Ms. Gooby said, there's, there's single-family homes and R9. I think from our perspective, the first time we went through this with the, with the group was that it actually included R6 and R6S. And we looked at it from the standpoint of that the lot size had to be large enough to be able to compensate and cover that, on that dwelling unit. So we actually, to make sure that it did not impede on the smaller lots and create that type of situation, we removed that R6, and we were transparent with, with the small groups when we said that, that we only wanted to be R9 or greater. There's still, I mean, your point is valid, but it's valid in the R9 as it is in the R9S.
Well, is there, I just asked my peers on council, if there's, if there's other, if there's not support for it, then I will drop that as a friendly amendment. I just feel that we're not being, just not, not being consistent, if we say we've got an S zoning, it's not an S. So, that's it. And if there's, if there's support amongst my peers for that as a friendly amendment, fantastic, and if there's not, I'll drop it, because I still support the UDO and plan to vote for it, but I would like to see that change.
I understand your concerns, but I appreciate the guidelines of keeping it in dimension to the home, less than 30%, require parking to be onsite. So I think that will mitigate some of those concerns you have, but I hear what you're saying. I don't want to be woken up at night because somebody's having a party next door at the Airbnb out back. So I understand that, but I don't know how to, I think the plan we have in place does something to resolve some of that, but...
Yeah, I wonder if they're just, you know, I understand the concern with Airbnbs, but you can have a single-family home that's an Airbnb. We actually have a situation in one of our neighborhoods in Stonebean, and some other places that, you know, people have Airbnbs that, you know, are not functioning in a way that their neighbors appreciate. So, I don't know that isolating it into this incident is a way to address any concerns as it relates to Airbnb.
All right, so I guess we take it there's not an appetite for changing that with council? Okay. All right, we've got a motion, it's been properly seconded, ended the discussion.
I did want to say, Mayor, thank you to those who were part of the task force and those who have given their input, seeing where we started and where we are now, it's because of your advocacy, it's because of your voicing your opinions about where we were and things that we needed to add to it, and there's still work to be done, but I do think that we are pleased with where we are now with, with the UDO. But, definitely we'll continue to have conversations about those particular items that were, that were brought up, particularly the park and land dedication, because going a little bit deeper on that 25%, I know myself and peers on council are really excited about making sure that we hold developers accountable for the space that they develop, and making sure that we have recreation there. But then to drill down just a little bit deeper and be able to dedicate a portion of that space for parks, I think it's appropriate, and that's the next step that we can take, that we want to do that. So, we'll continue to have those conversations, but come a long way.
And I will, I will say the same thing to council, as I said to many of the members out here, this, I think that even, this is a legacy, I think that was what was used. It really is, it's, it's, it's the dramatic change, and it's just the first step. I mean, so this is, we're taking a large leap forward, but that doesn't mean it just ends. I mean, we have, continue to have, we're getting ready to go into the land use update, so there's, there's going to be further conversations, and those comments are taken seriously.
Absolutely.
Just a quick question, Mr. Count, what is that, what does that process look like, just for the, so we're not just being vague saying we're going to talk about it? Like, what's the process like for us to make change?
We will be bringing back to you in, in the next couple of months, what that process will be to begin the update to the 10-year land use plan, and we'll discuss that with you, what those next steps will be at that point.
All right, motion made, properly seconded, all those in favor say aye. The opposed say nay.
Motion passed six zero.
All right, let's move on to the city manager report.
Okay, I will have the city manager shout out, so, you know, it's also, it's all awesome to be in the, in the top of the state, isn't it? When we're in the top 10 of anything in the state, usually it's a good, it's a good thing. Well, what we have found the last several years is that, last, probably last 10, is that we've always been in the top 10, top 5 for traffic accidents. And even this council has had a lot of discussions about, about traffic. And I'd like to give a shout-out to my GPD and our traffic safety unit. We actually made a high priority this year to step up our game. And we talk about the fact that our vacancies will have gone in our GPD from, say, 45 down to almost around the 10-ish mark. Well, what that has done is been able to fill those vacancies has allowed us to put a more emphasis in certain areas across all of our public, of our public safety, and specifically traffic, the traffic safety unit. It is one of those situations where we, we've been clear that we want to put the beat-down on speeders in this community. You speed, in Greenville, you're going to find out. And I think that what we have, we have done is proved that. If you look at these numbers, and you look at January through the November 1st of this year compared to last, our traffic stops are up over 5,000, our citations up over 6,700, our warning citations 288, and our, the violations that have been cited up 7,500 basically. And I think what we're going to see in this next year that has a direct translation into a lower traffic accident number. And I just, we move on to that, the next slide, I'd like to thank these individuals right here, we've got Mackenzie Renone, Chris Santiago, David Newton, Samantha Carnavelli, Jacob Musser, Michael Donahue, and Aaron Lemon. I hope I got your pictures right, because I took it off out of Facebook, so I hope this is who, I hope this is what Facebook, I hope, I hope this is what you actually look like. But I tell you what, I want to just give a tremendous shout-out to our GPD traffic safety unit, you have really knocked it out of the park. And once, like we talked about the UDO, this is just the beginning, we are, we are committed to making traffic safety a priority in this, in this community, and we're going to show it and prove it by the numbers. So thank you to GPD, our traffic safety unit, and all of the units within GPD, you're doing an outstanding job, so thank you.
All right, let's go to the city attorneys' report.
Quickly, I'll just echo council and shout-out to my manager, 10 years of service, Mr. Michael Cowan, and if it's appropriate, you know, wanted to, thankful to have worked with this council for the last two years, and particularly those who are rotating off, Mayor Pro Tiv Daniels and Councilmember Blackburn, thank you for allowing me to be, to work as, here as city attorney. So it's been a pleasure working with all of you all, particularly those who are rotating off, so, Godspeed.
We're still meeting on the 24th, right?
Yes, we are.
Okay. All right, let's go, hey, the city clerks' report.
I'll keep mine short, because we are going to...
Because you're going to have to type it out.
Exactly, that, but yes, congratulations to you, Michael and Tim.
All right, Councilmember Robinson.
Absolutely, congratulations to Grace Bell and all those others that are reporting to commissions, look forward to seeing all of you being involved, congratulations to Kelly Wall and his retirement, and Curtis Lieberman, he and I did battle for many years as a great officer and did a really excellent job for Greenville. Congratulations to Greenville-NC Alliance, there's still time to catch the ECU basketball game. And congratulations to Michael Cowan, you know, people who don't deal with him need to understand one thing, he is 24/7, and I really mean, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, if it's Saturday night, if it's Sunday after, it doesn't make a difference, and so, I know it's like that not just from me, but for everybody else up here, it bends his ear, and a lot of us bend his ear a whole lot. And so, he is non-stop, and he has this city's interest at his heart, he wants to grow them great. ECU football, playing Memphis at 4 o'clock, they are bowl-eligible, congratulations, coach and all the other coaches and football players. One thing I would like to hope everybody is mindful of, Thanksgiving's coming up, and a lot of people are not going to have Thanksgiving because they don't have the money or the food. And so, look, check into the community, there are ways you can donate canned goods and also frozen turkeys, I've learned, but there's also, you can go to like Publix and actually get a meal that's pre-prepared and all it needs to be is warmed up, and you can check with DSS, you can check with your churches, you can check with the Joy Soup Kitchen, there's a lot of people that are in need for Thanksgiving, so just reach out to your churches and these various other places and see who's in need. And again, you can do canned goods or a frozen turkey, but those who don't have the ability to, or the resource to cook those items, you can certainly go to Publix, and they got a really nice Thanksgiving meal, that all you got to do is just kind of warm it up, and it's a great meal. So I encourage everybody to do that as we get ready for Thanksgiving here in a couple weeks. Mayor, thank you very much, those are my comments.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Scully.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilmember Robinson, there are a lot of needs in our community, and appreciate you calling us all to serve. I want to wish happy birthday to my middle daughter Emmy, she turns 12 on Saturday, or Sunday, Sunday, the 16th. Very excited for her, so happy birthday Emmy, congratulations to the Pirates, come out and support them on Saturday, it's very exciting. It's a big deal when they're good, you know, it sounds kind of silly to put so much on a sports team, but, but go out and support them, it really is a big deal for our local economy and just for the spirit of the city to have them playing well, so encourage everybody to go out and support them. And then, Sunday, also at 2:00 PM over at the Higgs House on Dickinson, we're having a tea to tell people about our work for that historic property, the Higgs House on Dickinson at 2:00. Love to invite all my fellow council members out there to join us and learn about the historic preservation project that we're working on, on Dickinson Avenue. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you, Mayor, congratulations on the retirement of Kelly Wall and Sergeant Curtis Lieberman. Also, thank you, Mr. Michael Cowan, for your service to the city of Greenville, you're the best city manager I've had the privilege of working with, so. I know, I know. Also, to the ENC Alliance, congratulations on the work that they've been doing, being able to be liaison and see the different things and attend the meetings, they're really a driving force in what makes Greenville the destination city that it is, and so they are to be commended for the work that they are doing in the city. Also, to echo Councilmember Robinson and Councilmember Scully's comments about Thanksgiving coming up, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. We are living in tumultuous times, however, we have so much to be thankful for, and so we can spread that gratefulness and help someone else during this season. I think that is all my comments, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Blackburn.
I would like to just echo the commendation for Greenville PD, all those amazing traffic stops, it is so needed, and wow, you've really done the work, so really like to commend you for that. It would not be November if I didn't give my traditional holiday message. People hear the word vegan, and most often it is the butt of a joke, I appreciate that, we laugh at ourselves. But, being a vegan is also, for, for people who are vegans, it is a deeply held spiritual belief. So, I just encourage people this Thanksgiving to think about ways to celebrate, you can have an amazing meal without having to take a life for it, there's, if you really like that taste of turkey, or chicken, or fish, or whatever it is, they're amazing substitutes now, so it doesn't have to be, just, doesn't have to be iceberg lettuce and grocery store tomatoes, you can have an amazing Thanksgiving spread and not take a life of a turkey. Last, I would like to commend my peer Matt Scully and his family for their work on the Higgs House, and I hope to be there Sunday, so thank you.
Councilmember Foreman.
First, let me say to Michael, congratulations again, I mirror the sentiments of others on council, and I would dare say in the community, I appreciate the level of engagement that you have initiated in making sure that you hear the voices and the hearts of the people in our community. Also, want to mirror the sentiments of council members Robinson, Scully, and Willis as it relates to the needs that exist in our community. You know, housing insecurity and food insecurity has been an issue in our community for a long time, but has it been exacerbated here recently? And so, I won't go through a long dissertation about the subgroups of needs that have created themselves most recently, but we'll urge everyone that to check on your neighbors as well as look for opportunities to be of service to someone else, not just during the holiday season, but every day, because we've got people in our community that are struggling and suffering. That's all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tiv Daniels.
November holds some special things to my heart. One is, November is pancreatic cancer awareness month, as many of you know, my sister passed away from pancreatic cancer on August the 4th. It is a very prevalent disease, and it spreads quickly, and its survival rate is only 13%. So I think it's important that we add that to our tests and things that we receive when we're at the doctor. Once they find it, it's normally too late, but it doesn't have to be. November's also National Adoption Month, he's left, but I wanted to congratulate our Parks and Recreation Director, Don Octagon, his wife Janelle, and their oldest daughter Harper on the adoption of Skylar Grace yesterday. They already have her dressed like a pirate, and making sure she loves ECU, and they are wonderful individuals who really deserve this special gift, and I hope that one day she knows what gift she is to them, and what they are to her. I'd also like to wish Ms. Rosalie Jones a happy belated birthday, she turned 106 on November the 11th. And also, Michael, Michael Cowan, can't forget you. You know, I think a lot of times perceptions are, you know, one thing, and so when, when we are doing things and we're listening to people, people have a tendency to look at us and not know that we run to you. And that part of what you say is, let's make it happen, right? You do the research, you do the networking, you're out there every single day and night... You, you do the research, you do the networking, you're out there every single day and night, and it is appreciated. It is truly appreciated, all that you do. I love the way that you are very on hands. You are, let's go see what it looks like, not, let me check it out and I get back with you. You, you want to get in your car, you want to go, you want to make things happen for the city. You are very protective of your employees, and that's commendable. And you are my second city manager, and as Councilmember Willis calls you, Money Mike, that is appreciated, because you've, you've helped our city grow in more ways in these past, what, year and a half than I've seen. And so, that, that is appreciated. And let me see. One thing I do, would like to request, I was at the Town Common last night, and I know that there's some repairs going on, so we lit up the bridge, but there is a section by the bridge and the bathroom with absolutely no lighting at all. And I know some of that lighting may have been taken away just because of, of the repairs. There were people under the trees that scared the daylights out of me, and it made me wonder about the safety that way. Even with the lighting of the bridge, it doesn't shed enough light for safety measures for people who walk across that bridge, because we still have that pathway. But it was just something I noticed. And last but not least, I've got to make sure I got everything. Oh, back to Ms. Rosalie Jones. She stated on her birthday that she plans to be a hun, live to be a hundred and ten years old. So, y'all remember to keep wishing her a happy birthday. And I would like to wish the ladies of Sigma Gamma Rho a happy Founder's Day, which was yesterday, as they celebrated a hundred and three years of sisterhood. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ten years.
Yes.
It's a long time.
Yeah.
We both have a lot more gray hair now.
I'm telling you, we have some stories to tell.
It's silver anniversary.
We have some stories to tell.
We, we do have some stories to tell, so we appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
I look back and I think of the things that I've seen over the last ten years, and I really do think that probably the biggest accomplishment as a council and multiple councils that have been here has been the personnel of the city. I mean, I think that that speaks volumes for who we are as a community, and I think that some of the moves that have been made over the last decade from a personnel standpoint have been outstanding, outstanding. We've had outstanding leadership from a staffing standpoint in all the departments, of course, in the city manager's office, city clerk's office, city attorney's office. You guys are the ones that drive our city, right? We're the executive board. We tell you what we, we want you to do, and you guys go out and do it. And I think that is a testament of who we are as a community, and you guys do an outstanding job moving our city forward. So, thank you for all that each and every one of you do, and all of our employees for the city of Greenville. And I'll save my comments for the twenty-fourth, for some of our outgoing council members, so...
Man, you was bringing a turkey.
It wouldn't have been right, man, if they could place it...
I love it. I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion made by Council, or Mayor Pro-Tip Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passed six-zero.
We're adjourned.